We will start with a call to order. A call is being ordered. First, the determination in the courtroom. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have all seven members present. They're all absent, so we do have a quorum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. First item is to approve the agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion at this time for approval.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for this evening. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item three, recognition and awards. I don't see any on the agenda, so I'm not missing something or nothing. All right. And that brings us then to community comment. This is a time in each meeting where we invite any member of the community, bring forth any thoughts, ideas, concerns that they have to the board. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. The only rule is that we remain respectful at all times. If at some, any time a comment becomes disparaging, then I have to ask the speaker to step down as per board policy. So with that, any comments from the community? Please.
Hi. My name is Christopher David, and I'm a sophomore at Fairbough High School. Connor Nordmeyer and Tyler Mason couldn't be here today. They had other commitments tonight. I am here today to tell you what me, Tyler, and Connor did for our spring break. Most teens spend their week having fun, but we went, we spent our whole week meeting with 67 local and area businesses about the Autos program. You see, we have this incredible teacher, Mr. Lesman, who has taught us that the best things in life are the things you work for, strive for, and dream for. Mr. Lesman has always believed in us, inspired us, and has taught us far more than just how to fix a car. We heard widespread support from every business owner we talked to in Fairbough, Northfield, Ootana, and Kenyon area, who supported and want to see the Autos program continue. Many have stated that students who have graduated from Mr. Lesman's program are some of the best employees they have ever hired. One business stated that they get more quality students from Mr. Lesman's program than he sees coming from the college program, and even has an insurance binder on one of his employees because he is so tempted. Mind you, this is a student who came from Mr. Lesman's class and did not attend college, but went right to the workforce to work for him. There were even business owners who have been in Mr. Lesman's class, who speak highly of the quality of the program, that they got the belief in the community is that the Autos program is not only good for the students it serves, but also helps the community, businesses find quality workers who in turn pay taxes, they stay here, and support our own committee. My hope is that you will see that there is incredible support for the community to keep this program going, not only Fairbough businesses are interested in this, but business, businesses in surrounding communities, and they hope that you will not cut the program as planned. I hope that, I hope and pray that you will see the importance of the Autos program and will not vote, and will vote to keep it. We firmly believe that with some hard work, willingness of the heart, never giving up on your dreams, lots of perseverance, a little bit of faith, and if God truly has your back, he will make all things possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments from the community?
Are you going to go ahead and add one?
Yes, I think, unless somebody else, I'm sorry. Yep.
My name is Joanna Harrison. I am here to talk about the orchestra and also the arts that have had some discussion about the need of our minimizes. To begin with, I'm obviously too old, I'm a student in the system, but when I did, I had 20 years' experience as an orchestra parent. I did not start out as a promoter of orchestra on deck. It was just because you home and around the violin. I learned a lot, though, about it. To begin with, orchestra is not an extracurricular activity, it's an academic activity. And maybe somebody's ancient or before in the discussion, but I'm just going to say again from senior citizens, this is how I look at it. Orchestra teachers promote the basic skill of listening that you need for all education classes. We learn, we hear when we're born, but we don't listen. And we don't listen very well a good deal, I realize. You don't want to hear it, you don't. However, in orchestra you have to listen. And you learn to listen and find when your instruments, you need to work well with other people. And these skills are skills that you have for lifelong, in your lifelong skills in your work and in your home skills. But music itself is a man. This I know because I took a couple of semesters of music theory at St. Olm, and it is definitely a man. Music is also a science. Your instruments are all tuned, they also are developed, they are signs. We crush our Western world music, but there are other music programs too that are cultural and very much part of the universal, yeah, universal music scene. Music is also music therapy. If any of you were at the Paradise a week ago, when the dual piano people, whether you found out how you can motivate people with music and humor, and it was quite delightful, but our lives are also, you can also work the other way. But music also teaches self-discipline and personal growth. Orchestra in particular, because in order to tune an instrument and to work with others, you have to have a skill of listening very carefully. Our school programs have been inclusive, whether you're really good or not. And I listened to some pretty poor programs, but the kids feel good about themselves, even if you're not the best. I was fortunate to have my kids do fairly well. However, the, also, you had some discussion, or somebody did, that I called about, the orchestra. They were talking about doing creative arts, or also helping out the chopping block, minimizing hours that require them. I happen to have an interest in the creative arts, more so than what orchestra. My husband taught art for 32 years at the high school, and so I think that after more than one art show, and the kids there, we really learn a lot. If you were going to, if you were going to eliminate, though, right now, all of the creative arts from your life, right now, you would be standing butt naked out in the cold. That's not a very good picture, but it's true. Everything from the pencil, from everything we have with design is creative visual effects. They are extremely important. After my husband retired, we went into business, and we are doing commercial art now. And then it was that point that I started paying attention a little bit more, just exactly how much art is really, really important. And it should be more, not less. I would put the orchestra program down in every school if I had money for it. Then also, I'd like to say that I would like to ask anyone, how is it decision to eliminate the orchestra program after being in the district for so many decades? You added a lot of extracurricular activities, but this program has been in place for years. And we are fortunate in this part of the state to have more than just us. You've got Northfield, Ootana, and the others, so you have your programs as an ongoing. One of my kids right now that's over in New Pike, they don't have it there. And there's a different attitude as far as some things. Well, they got excellent school schedule, I'm not saying that, but orchestra really does add that fine line of education quality. As in comparison, because it frequently is thought about people who aren't in the curriculum-making business, that orchestra's an extracurricular. It's not. But I've often wondered, because when I drive by and see all the maintenance that we do on our extracurricular projects, how many kids in middle school and high school do not participate in any extracurricular activities? I'm really curious to know about that one. I did not go for the red win, as it should not have been on the ballot, it just shouldn't have been. The fine arts, the humanities have always taken a hit. And it is true that you have to have patience in the art parts, not in the commercial art, but in the arts that you see, such as the museums, the orchestras and such. However, there are secondary effects from all these that go on into the work life, that millions and billions of dollars are needed for, or are put towards the commercial end of the art. And I felt bullied by you guys, I really did. And I thought it sort of ironic, because high school's got a program on bullying. I think maybe you should look into it. When you feel that this once again has come up, and I think the whole thing is like transparency, I thank you for listening today. You got any questions?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other community comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on with the meeting. But first, I just want to thank everyone who does come to the meetings and do, does step forward. I know it takes a lot to stand up in front of the board and make these comments, and I assure you we are listening. There are difficult decisions facing the board in the next few months here. We do not take them lightly. We will be having many discussions on those decisions. And so I ask you to keep involved and please keep listening and giving us your feedback. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would I to remove one item for no further discussion?
Okay.
Under the consent agenda, and that's the request by Ms. Orr for a five-year extended leave, halftime, and she's going to substitute the other half. Do you need to, you have some questions to answer about that?
Okay. Is there anything else that we'd like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Robishaw?
Aye.
Clerk is not ready. Richard Olson?
Aye.
Yvette Marthaller?
Aye.
Jason Engberg?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Casper?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mr. Chairman, the vote is seven zero in favor.
Before we get on to the topic that you requested on the consent agenda, one of the things that was in there were many retirements within the district.
Yes.
And I think it's, although we don't debate consent agendas, afterwards I thought we should take just a minute and recognize all those who have served our district for so many years. I was just looking through the list, and there wasn't a comprehensive list, so I couldn't count how many. But many retirements this year, many people who have served our district for, did you guys count?
I have 12.
12, 12 people.
Like over 300 years of service.
300 years of service.
I would be adding them together.
Thank you.
Over 200, let's say. I should be exaggerating, but over 200 years of service.
So over a couple hundred years of service. And we missed, if we didn't take a moment after that action and just say thank you for all those years of service, and we wish you a wonderful retirement and many great years. All right. Now on to the, Mr. Robishaw, you had a request to remove an item, so if you want to explain what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a request by art teacher at Roosevelt to take a five-year leave extended, a five-year extended leave, which is permissible under statute. But in her letter, she's indicating that she wants to do it halftime, and then substitute halftime, the other halftime. I'm not sure that's permissible under that statute. I think if they're going to take an extended leave, that they have to really not even be involved in a TRA system. And I may be incorrect on that, but I think we need to check that out for her benefit as much as anybody else's. So maybe Nicole can answer that.
You want to respond to that, Nicole, or do you want us to research that?
She's actually requesting to take a leave of absence from her position, a part-time leave of absence, so she's not actually taking the statute or leave of absence that you're referring to. She's, hey, she's requesting a leave of absence that we have, a memorandum of understanding that we put into place last year.
I think in her letter, she references Minnesota statute.
Oh, did she?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can go back. We'll just pull her up. If we table that, and then we can go back and research that, and just make sure we got everything covered.
Yeah, I think for her benefit.
Yeah.
It could be a real penalty if she's.
We want to make sure that she gets her TRAs.
Right, because she's still planning to teach .5. She'll, she'll be a .5 art teacher at Roosevelt next year.
You might want to check that out and see if that's even permissible under that statute clause. Because I understand that, that provision of that law is that teacher, the person who takes that leave is supposed to leave the TRA system and not participate in TRA in another school district or another continuing district. I may be wrong in that, Nicole, but I think it will benefit her. We should check that out.
Sure, we'll research that.
Yep, thank you. So we will table that item for the moment? Yep. Okay. Next, we have a curriculum committee. And a curriculum committee report.
I would just like to update you on our curriculum committee this evening. Todd Sesker was our guest speaker, and he shared with us the ad hoc committee meeting minutes. We had a great discussion about what it means to have a comprehensive program and where we are at in Fairbough, just the beginning conversations, and kind of talked about where we might go in the future with that. Would you like to add anything, Tom or Todd, with that?
Well, I think that the discussion was good in trying to figure out what our building blocks are to create a comprehensive education. And then I think it also is good for us to compare what we're doing with our education with other big nine schools, and then on top of that, what our vision would be of an ideal comprehensive education. And I think the piece I took out of that meeting was that if we start with the building blocks, for example, physical education, and we look at our physical education curriculum compared to other school districts, and then look at some research-based education, what should our physical education curriculum look like, and what does it look like now? So that's what I took away.
That was, that really basically was the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Other than to talk about the curriculum cycle, which comes up next here, and I just shared that with the curriculum committee. And questions? Thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have consider the approval of curriculum review cycle. I don't know if you want to step here, but.
At the board work session, we did do a presentation of the, of the whole entire curriculum review guide. We talked about implementing a six-year cycle, and each year is, there's a component that's identified in the handbook about what we would do in each of those years to make sure that when we do choose curriculum and we do make changes in our curriculum, that we make a very solid, we make solid moves, and they're very sound decisions. And I'm asking for the approval of the curriculum cycle. Questions on that?
And we did look at this in our work session this past month here. Any questions on this? We're looking at some action items, so we'll be looking for a motion to adopt this. Is any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to adopt it.
Second.
With motion and a second to adopt, any further discussion? All right. We have a, just to read what we're doing here, we have a motion and a second to approve the curriculum review cycle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next on to item seven, policy committee. Starting with policy committee report. Is there a report from the policy committee?
Go ahead.
Well, now, we all commented about that one.
That's. Go ahead. Yep. You can look at the policies that we have listed there that the committee reviewed. I think Vette's going to comment a little bit about the district facilities policy. And then we also have the policies that we've, the, we've decided to rescind, and we went back and we looked at to make sure we didn't do any duplication of those policies, and we didn't eliminate something that wasn't necessary. So we got it in there so that the policies that need to be rescinded should be rescinded based on legal terms and what we currently have in policy. Doesn't make any sense to have those. But the three new policies that we're looking at adopting are 902, 710, and 203. So there's your segue for facilities.
Well, just, the only thing I was going to comment on the facilities policy is that it's a work in process, and I didn't know if Emery wanted to talk about meetings that you're planning to talk to the stakeholders involved in this, because it is a change, I think, for some of the associations or people that are using facilities currently.
Hello. Yes, this has been a change in terms of the move to having community education oversee the, the use of school district facilities and equipment. What is going to happen is, so we just changed this policy for now. We have not changed the 1004.1, which is the procedural document that outlines the fee structure and the rental classifications of the facilities. Currently, the district was in, well, I believe that buildings and grounds and the student activities office kind of shared responsibilities for this previously, and now community education will start looking at this. And for the fee structure, we will start to have meetings with community members, anyone who's interested. We have one tomorrow, starting with the sports associations, who would like to come and talk to us about how the fees are going to look. Tomorrow at 5:00, so if any of you want to join us, we're hoping that some members of the sports associations will join us. They probably are the biggest users of the facilities in the district right now, and there will be a change in terms of fee structure for them. So we have to get their input as much as we can. I have not had any conversation yet with the facilities, or with the associations yet, so tomorrow's going to be my first chance.
I think a point of clarity with the fee structure is that there is a policy in place that has a fee structure that hasn't been abided by, and that's one of the reasons why we have to review it. But that is not part of this policy. That's a separate piece.
Yeah. And that'll be worked on over the next couple of months.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So in front of us, we have three policies for first reading. Those are policy 902, use of school district facilities and equipment, policy 710, extracurricular transportation, policy 203, procedures for policy 203. What's, is that a typo? That reads a little strange. Organizational meetings and conduct of meetings.
That's another thing that we have to review, is what we're doing, or we looked at doing, was taking these policies and turning them into procedures. They're board, about the board and how we do our business here. And there was one question that came up regarding, well, what was policy 204.8 about the roll call vote order? I don't know if you can find, there's a paragraph, upon any resolution requiring a roll call vote by law, the role of board members shall be called and their yays and nays reported. This procedure states that it should be done in alphabetical order, which was, we realized at the policy meeting, that's typically not done. So if we want to eliminate that rule, that's an option, but someone else brought up the fact that having a system alphabetically is good because people know when their vote is taken, and they are not persuaded by, say, someone who votes ahead of them in a different order, or it makes it more fair for it to be in alphabetical order, I guess, in summary. So we should look at whether we want to keep that or just not have that, maybe some discussion around that issue to board here.
But we do do it alphabetically, we just do it backwards. We start at the end of the alphabet and go forward.
So is that your procedure? So we would, I don't know if we need to clarify that it is alphabetically.
Only reason I do it that way is I don't want to call on myself first out of politeness.
And most, isn't that one of the rules, is that the clerk always goes last? Sorry, I lose my voice.
Could just speak up, Deb.
So the whole time I've been on the board, the clerk has always gone last.
Alphabetically, in reverse, with the clerk going last.
Well, no. When I, when I was the clerk, I always started with hay and went down, but there's a lot of clerks that start at the bottom and go backwards, and the clerk is always last, no matter what.
So alphabetically is fine.
Well, I'm open.
That's fine. I think it's more clarification. I don't know how many people actually knew that that policy was in there.
All due to me, so.
All right. So alphabetically is fine, because we've been doing it, with the exception of the clerk being.
And we won't read anything here, calling yourself first every time.
I'll do what Deb said. I'll call, start with Casper and then with Robishaw, and I'll vote last then.
And we're just great.
No, I want to be called third.
You're out of luck.
We didn't consider just getting rid of that piece.
Under the new policy.
All right. So we'd like to leave it in if alphabetically is what I mean, that's the typical procedure.
Well, I would say if, if it's, I was unaware this was in policy, so if it is in policy, then we should be following it. So if it says alphabetically, then we have to do, I think we ought to be doing alphabetically. And if we want to do clerk last, we need to put that into the policy. And it's a detail.
And it will be procedures now.
We're voting on legal things, and the last thing we want is for somebody to question the legality of something that they ordered me to vote.
Yeah, if we're violating policy, that's issue, but the whole intent is that you have a roll call vote. However the call is made is not the significant issue, it's whether or not all members present have a chance to vote.
Yep, and I think Vette's point is that, do we want to get it out of policy and just make it procedure for the board? Then you're not violating quote-unquote policy.
Can we leave these policies procedures now? Also, that's one question. And then also, do we want to leave alphabetically?
There, there has to be a policy about it, but the policies can all be under one with separate procedures. We've looked at that some.
According to Sturgis parliamentary procedure, it says names are called in alphabetical order or in the numerical order of districts, or some other appropriate order. The name of the presiding officer is usually called last. Number does not wish to vote, he may remain silent, or for answer present or abstaining. That's about it. So in that case, the president would vote last, and that would make sense, because a lot of times, it can be, the president decides to tie vote, or decides not to, so I would say that would make more sense, is to let the chairman vote last.
So alphabetically, with the chairman voting last, would be in the procedure that we adopt.
Chairperson.
And I, yep, and I'm fine with that becoming procedure.
We'll bring that up to the next meeting. Thanks for the feedback.
Any other questions about these policies in front of us for first reading?
I don't, and I don't think that affects 203, though. Does it?
The actual policy.
The actual 203. This is for 204. So I think you're still okay with the policies that we have on, on the agenda.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you, Deb.
All right. If there's no further questions on the first reading policies, we'll move on to second reading policies. So we have, so this is actually not sec, we have no second reading policies, we have a number of policies to rescind. So I'll read these off, and then I'll entertain a motion to put them all together, if the board is okay with that, and then we can have some discussion of them as a whole. So I'll read them off. Policy 304.12, annuities adopted 7/12/1976, revised 8/23/1982. Policy 407.6, annuities adopted 10/14/1974, revised 6/24/2002. Policy 454.6, annuities adopted 3/10/1975, and revised 12/13/1976. Policy 401.5, physical examinations adopted 9/9/1974, revised 11/10/1977. Policy 450.5, physical examinations adopted 3/10/1975, revised 12/13/1976. Policy 46.8, inclement weather adopted 6/26/1978, revised 2/12/1979. I'll state for the record that none of these policies are older than I am, but they are very close.
Mr. Chairman, do we have something to replace these policies?
We found that these policies were either illegal, they're not, no longer legal, with some of the conflicts that they have with both contractual language and state law and federal law. And they're also included in some of the other policies that we currently have.
So it's the policy committee's determination that they're no longer needed?
That's correct.
Any other questions on this? I'll entertain a motion to rescind them all in one, one vote?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to. We have a motion and a second to, uh, rescind all of the policies I've just listed. Any further discussion on any of these items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you for working to clean out the policy. Um, now on to the Finance Committee, uh, item number eight, eight A, the Financial, Finance Committee Report. Uh, is there a report from the Finance Committee?
I was absent, so one of the two gentlemen left to talk.
Some of the items are, we're bringing forward on, uh, actions, but, uh, basically we're on target, uh, for, with our budget, and we reviewed our fund policy, and I think the rest'll come up later.
Okay. Comments? Alright. Hearing none, we'll take them, uh, one by one. Uh, Item, uh, eight B one, uh, Revised twenty thirteen Finance Committee Schedule. Any discussion on this item? These are public meetings, so they have to be acted upon, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next up is the Fiscal Year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen Ice Arena Contract. We have an attachment there. I'll entertain a motion to approve in a second, and then open it up for discussion.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Ice Arena Contract. Any discussion on this item?
I think they went up five dollars per hour.
Yeah, I think that, I got double checked with Clean, but I think that's what, I think you're right.
It was five dollars per hour.
Being on the Ice Arena Committee, I can assure you that they work hard to keep their rates as low as possible and still keep the building open, so I have a lot of confidence that that's the rate that they can afford to give us. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, Item eight B three, additional, uh, addition of a Jefferson paraprofessional. Does somebody wanna tell us a little bit about this item?
Um, I can start with it, but if you wanna go into further detail, you might have to call Cheryl, but this is basically a need for a student that has some, uh, high needs for us, and, um, so we will be looking at special education services eventually for this child, but right now, um, we are recommending approval to have a paraprofessional with this student right now.
Would we expect some of this cost to be, uh?
Once that student is, qualifies for special education, if the student does, then they will be eligible for reimbursement, yeah.
Alright, I'll enter, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious as to what the expected timeline for that process might be.
No, you're gonna have to give details, I'm gonna have to defer that if you're okay with that. Sure.
Well, when a, when a student, uh, enters the school district, of course, we are obligated to serve that student, um, based on their needs. Uh, some students come in not being identified as re- as special education eligible, and that we are, we have about thirty school days to, um, evaluate a student once they are referred for special education, uh, evaluation, and, um, after those thirty days or, and we, we try to expedite it as best we can as well, um, with a situation especially like that we have here. Um, I don't wanna go into too much detail for data privacy reasons, but, um, it's about thirty school days.
Alright, any further discussion? Will I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, add a paraprofessional on Jefferson? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Um, Item eight B four, Annual Review of Policy seven fourteen, The Fund Balance. Um, Policy seven fourteen, uh, do you wanna talk us through that a little bit?
Yeah, the, you guys, the school board asked for information regarding our policy, and we wanted to show that to you, and, and also, we reviewed it at our Finance Committee meeting, so, for your review. I think the piece that, um, the board, and we'll have a little bit of this discussion later on too, is the policy itself and what the suggestion is from the accountants when they do our audit. The eight to nine and a half percent, uh, is the general rule of thumb that this district has approved for a reasonable balance for a fund balance. If you look at number five, letter H, if the fund balance goes at a level that is at eight percent or below, um, letter E, it says, um, according to this school district's policy, that you must present the voters a referendum to obtain additional revenues. And I think that was one clarity. The other piece is with the current fund balance that we have, we're at about fourteen point seven percent with undesignated funds, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. I have dollar amounts for you that you can have a, a little bit of a discussion, um, about. But I think that the clarification was where is that range that we find our, our fund balance in? The, again, the, um, piece of the auditors or the accountants that have told us that they would like to see between fifteen and eighteen percent in our fund balance, but in difficult times, we know that sometimes that's, that might be a little bit unrealistic, but, so I wanted to give that information to you, and that is the main purpose of that, and if your wish is to revise that, we certainly can, otherwise we can keep those percentages the same, and that's good feedback for our Policy Committee.
Now, this is under an action item, is there really an action required on this this evening?
Oh, only if you want to change the percentages to make it.
To change it in some fashion.
Otherwise, it does not require action.
Alright. Thoughts on this item at this, this moment from the board?
Well, I think, uh, as was stated, the auditors really like to see us at fifteen percent. We're at, what, about twelve and a half percent right now or so?
Actually, we're about fourteen point seven right now.
Fourteen, yeah. And that was a little bit unexpected because of the jobs bill or something that came, money came in from?
Well, you know, just a combination of different things that have happened. The, it's really difficult, and of course, Clean's not here to defend herself either. It's difficult sometimes to project what the numbers are going to be for enrollment, and sometimes you guess a little bit low, sometimes you guess a little bit high. We guess a little bit low at enrollment, and we end up with more kids, so as a result, we end up with a little bit higher fund balance.
It was on the favorable side.
It was on the favorable side, yes.
But, uh, it was interesting at the meeting, John Curry sits on our committee, and he's the, the interim superintendent at Medford, and he said Medford is a twenty-five percent fund balance, and he, he said he thought North Fields was forty percent. So it just puts it in a little bit of perspective. Uh, this last item we just approved, it is one item, that's one reason why you need to keep a fund balance, because you get unexpected, uh, costs that are not all reimbursed, uh, by state and federal, and that's just one example of them. Plus, our revenues don't come in, so the less, smaller our fund balance, the more we end up having to borrow, so. That fund balance, uh, I'm pretty committed that, uh, we need to maintain that fund balance.
And we'll, um, certainly be talking more about the fund balance in the context of budget discussions towards next year as well.
Yeah, I, just to comment, I would not be in a position to act on any modification of the fund balance, about more comprehensive discussions.
Yep.
Ramifications, projected legislative action. I think at this point, we need to just, um, hold it and, and have more detailed discussion at a work session.
Other thoughts at this time on this item? Okay, uh, so I'm not hearing a, a motion at this moment to, to change this policy, so we'll, uh, leave that be for the moment. Um, I suspect we'll be having more discussions about it, uh, in the upcoming meetings. Uh, next, Item eight C, um, Enrollment Report. But, uh... Looking at this here, and it's looking like our numbers are holding fairly steady. There's always a slow decline at this time of year, and it looks like that's holding true again this year. But still well within our projected. Alright, and questions on that? We also have Item, so I'm clicking some wrong buttons here, give me a second. Um, Item eight C two, The Financial Report. See if there's any questions there. Um, and Item eight C three, um, Approval of Gifts and Donations. Uh, so we have a number of, uh, gifts this evening, I'll read those off. Uh, the Faribault Middle School PTO, uh, made a three hundred and forty dollar donation, uh, to the band, uh, to purchase band supplies. Uh, they also made a one hundred dollar donation to the choir, uh, a gift for the choir piano accompanist, um, and they also made a three hundred and thirty-nine dollar and ninety-seven cents donation to the choir, uh, as a gift for the choir, uh, music purchase. Um, additionally, we have a gift from Faribault Transportation, uh, donation of bus transportation cost of ninety-one dollars and ten cents, uh, for the Roosevelt PTO, including forty-five students, two teachers, and ten parents, to attend, uh, the Egan Feed My Starving Children Event on February eleventh, twenty thirteen, in Egan, Minnesota. Uh, next, uh, from the Rice County Chemical Health Coalition, uh, donation of eighty-five mouse pads for the Faribault Middle School Technology Department, uh, with a value of two hundred and fifty-five dollars. And finally, uh, um, again, almost monthly, uh, the Faribault Booster Club, um, uh, for the fitness center, in the amount of five thousand dollars, forty-seven cents and twenty-four cents, um, five thousand forty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, um, for additional equipment, um, for the high school fitness center. Um, so as always, uh, this is probably the best part of the meeting, to see community members stepping forward and, and working hard to support our district. Uh, I wanna single out the Booster Club, they have raised, uh, an incredible amount of money to better some programs that are in our district, um, and I'm, uh, very thankful to that, as I know, and I know I speak on behalf of the board on that, so. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve these donations.
So who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the gifts as listed. Any further comments on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next, um, Item, we're now on to Item nine, Other Committee Reports. There's no, uh, report from the Insurance Committee. Uh, we have a Wellness Committee Report from Anne Marie.
Hello, again, I believe in your packets you have, what is HHFKA? Does anybody have that? It's the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. I am not gonna pretend I know every detail of this. Colleen is not here, and she does know a lot more than I do about this. But this is what we spent the majority of the time on last Wellness Committee meeting. Things are rapidly changing, I think the one thing I want to point out is at the very end, um, towards the back, there are, there's information on how, how, how things are gonna start looking in terms of nutrient standards and the new standards for K-twelve, it's this chart way at, way in the back. And really, the things that this act focuses on in terms of food nutrition is sodium levels, uh, fat content and calories, trans fats and calories. So it's really starting to, year by year, um, make food healthier and, um, better options for students. So that's, that's what we reviewed last time. I would entertain questions if you have them. I don't know if I'll be able to answer them specifically, but I can try.
Any questions for Anne Marie on this item? So it's, it's my understanding that our food service is working hard to implement these faster than even we require by law.
Yes.
So there's many changes happening to lunch menus. I think that's important to, to get out there.
Do we have any statistics about, uh, changes in the number of students who are eating our school lunches?
I don't have that information, I'm sorry.
Sometime it'd be nice to take a look at that, see if we're having any, any change because of the change in the menus.
Okay.
And diets, if we have more or less kids eating than, any trends?
Other questions for Anne Marie?
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a request. Uh, I had, was contacted by several members of our community that are pork and turkey producers, who had a question about, um, the reduction in, um, pork and turkey perhaps in our lunch program. And I'd just like to request some further information. I, I tried to respond in what limited way I knew, but, uh, in regards to how that might impact, um, or what, um, are the exact details about reducing pepperoni or those types of things in our, uh, in our program, and I'd like to be able to respond intelligently to them, since we have a number of pork and turkey producers as members of our community.
Yeah, we get back to you, I think, just the quick answer with the pepperoni, we didn't offer it in elementary last year, we tried it this year, and, um, we decided to pull it off because some of the health reasons, and also, um, we're working with some of the Somali community and talking to them, it seemed like a win-win situation with that, but, um, we can get, uh, our food service people to show you what we have for menu items and, um, what sort of products we have that have turkey and pork in them, we can go ahead and get that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just requesting information so that I can respond intelligently to those, uh, inquiries that I receive.
Yep, you bet.
And maybe if there is another person within the system that I could direct their questions to, could give them even a better answer.
Yes, definitely Colleen Murdisor.
I was gonna say, Colleen sent out a big email about it.
Yep, she did.
No, I, I did see that. I guess, in, in the contacts that were made with me, um, they questioned, you know, if our local schools aren't supporting, you know, aren't using local products or, and something. That was, that raised the question in their mind, and I would just like to make sure that they're getting the accurate information.
And it has to do with all the new Obama standards.
Yes.
For health, especially in sodium content, and the increased obesity in children due to sodium and saturated fats.
Well, I was able to give them some information about federal requirements and so on, but I didn't feel like I gave them the as detailed an answer as they probably want.
I would, I was just gonna say, I would suggest if you just have them contact me or Colleen, that's probably the quickest way.
Okay.
That I can try to answer that, I think that's easiest.
And I think we could also invite, I mean, currently there isn't a parent or, say, a community member.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe this is something new, the Wellness Committee is involved in this whole process, and so I think I would encourage a parent or even a business owner to.
Yep.
Could certainly be a part of the Wellness Committee as we're reviewing.
We, we used to have parents on the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, and so maybe this year it's just, we don't have anybody yet, but I know there are concerns coming up specifically around the guidelines that a community member might wanna participate in the Wellness Committee, um, going forward.
That's a great suggestion, thank you.
We don't really have a choice though, do we? We have to abide by these guidelines, is that correct?
Yes, I, right, that's, things would get very expensive if we didn't follow these guidelines.
Aren't we gonna be raising prices of lunches because of substitutions? If you can't serve pork, what can you serve? I mean, are we against turkey too, or not?
I don't know.
We're against, we're against, no, we're not against any foods.
Yeah, we're not against.
We're against, we're against, like, what Deb was saying, we're, we're in favor of offering healthy alternatives for kids. It doesn't matter what the food is, we just want it to be healthy. How's that?
It depends on how it's prepared.
Yeah.
For the sodium content of prep, how they preserve it and everything is the big thing. Then dyes and, and things of that nature.
Could we get a list of safe foods and unsafe foods?
We can check with Sodexo, I mean, that would, Sodexo is our food service provider, and we can certainly ask that question.
If they're gonna, you know, take out pork and put turkey in, but they say, no, we don't want turkey, what's left?
Who says they don't want? Who says they don't want?
White meat, chicken?
Who says they don't want turkey?
I don't think anybody said we're cutting turkey. No, 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 no.
Nobody said we're cutting pork either.
Yeah, oh, right.
So I don't, I, those are all rumors.
Yeah.
The only thing we did is we took pepperoni pizza off. We didn't have it, we, we haven't had it in element, I don't remember the last time we've had it in elementary school.
When my son was in elementary school, six years ago.
Yeah, we just tried it again this year and then as a result of the new standards in the health industry.
Can we serve pork?
Yeah, absolutely.
It depends and if it meets the guidelines.
If it's the right kind of, yeah, the meat.
If it meets these standards, the sodium, the trans fats, the calories, yep. And it's just what Sodexo has, you know, in their options to offer.
And of course, part of the problem is, it's not necessarily the pepperoni that's making the pizza of unhealthy choice. The amount of cheese and everything that's on there and all the other ingredients that have sodium and trans fats in it are what makes the whole thing unhealthy. It's not just the pork product. And that's what people don't understand.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We also want to be, um, we also want to be aware of our constituents too. We have kids who have peanut allergies, we don't want to put peanuts in the menu. So, I mean, those are things that we have to consider too. Um, there are a lot of different dichotomies that are working here and not just one certain group that's work, that we're, we're working with all kinds of people in the community to try to adhere to, to what their needs are the best that we can.
Alright, next on the agenda is community ad, which also has your name behind it, so maybe you don't want to go anywhere.
I will go over it, I'll just stay right here. I just have one exciting thing to talk about and it's tentative, so I, I'm a little nervous talking about it, but I think it's gonna happen. Uh, we're wanting to pull together, community education in collaboration with, uh, the Alternative Learning Center and community, um, SHAC and Rice County Public Health, United for Kids, Carlton College, St. Olaf College and others in the community are trying to pull together a six week summer program for at-risk youth K through eight. Uh, it will be held at Roosevelt. Lots of investors at the table. We call it a braided funding sort of consortium model of, of partners. And we're looking at, Colleen Cardenudo is helping us frame up the curriculum, but we're calling it, uh, Summer Steam, A Power Source to Help Faribault Youth Complete and Compete. So the steam of course is the stem with the arts. So we're really trying to go after a, a big summer push around remediation proficiency completion to help education, education gap, all of that stuff. So really wanted to thank the community that has come to the table and decided not to offer their programming and decided to pull their resources together with us to offer more comprehensive, seamless programming this year.
That's wonderful, thank you Anne Marie.
Yep, you're welcome.
Alright, um, on to item number ten, other matters. Uh, the first item ten A, approve Faribault Area, Area Learning Center Extended Field Trip.
Hi, I'm Timorn, I'll guess, and I teach, uh, FIAD and Health at the ALC.
Hi, I'm Cora Packard and I teach Science at the ALC. And we are co-op in a class together as far as the strip goes.
And, uh, the, the class we put together is called TREC. And, uh, TREC F A L C actually, TREC stands for, uh, uh, TREC for Real Experience Novel, uh, Knowledge. And we're trying to, uh, combine FIAD and Science and the activities that we do and, uh, make it more hands-on, experiential for our students, give them another opportunity. Uh, the field trip, uh, as you can see, is, uh, is something that the students have to earn. And, uh, um, there's actually three field trips that we're working on and this one is overnight one and we need to have approval to do that.
Alright, any questions? Looks like a great opportunity.
Second?
We have a, uh, motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you guys very much for doing this for our students, appreciate that, it's a great thing. Um, next on the agenda, um, our, uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen strategic plan. Uh, we have now discussed this a, a number of times at board meetings and have looked through it and done some edits and so now it comes before us to, uh, to be approved, to become official for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, uh, school year.
Mister Chair, did we skip an item?
Ed Minnesota Classroom Foundation Grant.
Those are both attachments to item ten A, did I miss something?
That was how they were funding the trip.
Oh, okay.
Is through that grant.
It's part of the same, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so item ten B then is the, the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen strategic plan. As I was saying, we, um, have looked at this a, a number of times. Um, uh, and so it comes before us tonight for, for approval.
Did you check it Deb? Alright.
Or tell us?
I can't find it.
You're not reading that extra, that sentence that was a duplicate, right?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So we don't need to have a, an extended discussion tonight unless, uh, someone feels it's warranted.
I just noticed at vision two, it says, uh, on the fund balance, at minimum in eight percent to nine and a half percent and our fund policy calls for nine and a half percent.
No, keep reading it, it says eight there.
There's sort of two places in it, if you have the policy, I can show you. Yeah, I see it there, it says eight and, eight and a half.
Eight to nine and a half.
Right, um, but if you look in the fund balance, uh, eight and a half is the official threshold and nine and a half is what we're aiming for. So the number of eight percent is coming from the, from the policy.
I'll take your word for it.
On the, on the policy, it's under five minimal general fund unassigned fund balance. Letter G and H, where it talks about nine and a half and then the eight.
Well, I see the nine and a half and then it says that after eight, we start taking, we start taking some drastic procedures.
So we want to keep it between the eight because be, if it's above eight, we don't want it higher than nine and a half. So we need to keep it at a minimum of eight and maximum of nine and a half.
I think, just for clarity, I think it means, um, this is my interpretation, is that the minimum is nine, between eight and nine and a half. It's okay to go above that for cash flow, especially when the state holds back money and we don't have to borrow so much. So I think the minimum stands for eight to nine and a half percent, somewhere between there. Cause it, it goes back.
Could fluctuate within a year if we got down that low, you could be fluctuating in that range over the course of the year.
I like that, I like the minimum of nine and a half better.
Any other comments on this, this item? Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan.
So moved, seconded.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you all, it went quickly in this evening, but, uh, the strategic plan was the, uh, result of quite a bit of effort as it always is every year and as it should be, so I thank everyone for the time we've put into that. And this will be up on the, uh, website soon, I'm assuming?
Yep.
That's the strategic plan, the newest version. Okay, item, uh, ten C, discussion of budget timelines. Uh, I wanted to put this, uh, uh, this item in here so that we can bring, um, uh, the board up to speed on what Todd and I have talked about for a timeline for, for making decisions here in the next couple of months. Um, and also for anybody watching the meeting that they might be informed on this. Um, uh, we have been, uh, you know, waiting for quite a, a while now to hear from the state and get a sense of, of what might happen there. And while nothing is finalized at the state, I think, uh, there are a number of proposals and, and we have some sense of, of, uh, the fin- finished product, perhaps falling somewhere between those proposals. And so while nothing is finalized, I think we do have enough, uh, information to begin these discussions uh, in a holistic sense, something that we've been sort of struggling with, uh, up until this point. Um, so starting, uh, at our next work session, which is, uh, one week from today, uh, we'll have a, a presentation with our, our best estimate of what the budget looks like for next year. Um, uh, with some thoughts on, uh, how that might or might not be affected by, uh, various proposals coming from the state, um, so that we can begin those discussions. Um, my, uh, hope would be then that, uh, after that discussion, um, we can start setting parameters for ourselves about, uh, uh, when, if, if ever we want to make some changes to the budgets, uh, for next year. Um, tonight we are acting on, you'll see the next two items here are to put, uh, um, staff on probationary status. It is possible to take them off of probationary status, but, uh, if we don't put them on there now, uh, we're, we're missing a deadline. So this forces our hand to do that, uh, this evening. Um, so in effect, this putting people on probationary status is.
Can I, can I just clarify, we're putting, putting staff on u- unrequested leave of absence? Probationary just.
Sorry, probationary staff, oh yeah, terminated staff and I, I misread that, thank you very much. Unrequested leave of absence, um, uh, and so, so that would, uh, take place tonight. Um, uh, in the next couple of months, as we get some clarifications from the state, we could start making some decisions. Um, and I think we can, uh, have a sense of what that might look like starting next week. So we're gonna start that discussion, uh, next week. And, uh, my hope would be that by May, we'd have word from the state and we could make a final decision for next year's budget. Um, that will of course rely on, on what we hear from the state and how soon we hear it. But we have, uh, uh, some tea leaves to read at this point. So I wanted to give everybody a sense of the, the timeline, that there will be more discussions. The site is not closed as of this evening. Um, and to see if there's any discussion, questions or comments on how we should move forward on, on these items.
Well, I, uh, are there, are there some things that we need to act on before May? If we were, you know, and we talked about fund balance, for example, earlier. If we were to set aside some of the money in our fund balance, uh, above nine and a half percent, could, uh, could we do some things before we know what the legislature's doing that we think are important?
Um, the answers, the quick answer is yes, you could. Uh, the, of course, the more you meet, the more you get educated with this whole process. As Jason outlined, I think April first, our first work session is where we're going to start digging into this uh, a little bit more deeply to talk about the fund balance and then also the ad hoc committee's suggestions and some of the other feedback that we've heard from staff and, and also you guys. The, our timelines are a little bit quicker. Uh, we'd like to know what you would like to add back in thirteen, fourteen, by the end of April, quite honestly. And we, we would like to start focusing on that. We will, we won't know what the legislature is going to have for us for next year, but in the big scope of things, you've already cut one point seven million dollars out of the budget. We don't know if that's gonna balance the budget next year. We may need that extra revenue that the state's gonna come up with to provide us, uh, with a balance for our budget next year. Uh, in my estimation, again, this is data that you'll be seeing, I actually have some of the data now if you'd like to see it too, but the, the only flexibility that you have for next year is looking at the fund balance and deciding if you want to take some of that excess fund balance and then bring back some programs for thirteen, fourteen. So we have all that data, it's just a matter of, of the board reviewing it on April with some very rough numbers. Just so you know, they're very rough numbers for us, what's in the budget next year. But taking that dollar amount aside and, and making a decision on how you want to handle that. I think you need to have that information, I, I think you need to have our finance director there talking to you about that. I think that's very important, um, when you make these decisions for next year. The last thing you want to do in this district is to impact the general fund balance and put it into a downward spiral where you're heading right into statutory operating debt. So you need to resolve two pieces, they, they're not separate. You've got an excess fund balance, which you can deal with, but you also have the actual budget, the general fund. And, um, if you don't resolve that second piece of it, the general fund, where that eight and nine and a half percent piece is, then you're gonna be heading to statutory, statutory operating debt pretty quickly. So you've got two pieces of pie, you got, you can certainly spend the fund balance, but you've got to figure out a long-term solution too. Otherwise, you're gonna be in a lot of trouble in a few years financially.
And if we spend the, the fund balance on anything that's a recurring bill, it draws it down to get the following year.
Every year, if you spend three hundred thousand dollars on programs you want to bring back, then that three hundred thousand dollars will be spent every single year. And depending on how long you want to do that, which would be another discussion, if you want to do that for five years, you have to realize at the end of that five years, if you want that, you're gonna have to figure out a way to raise that revenue or make cuts.
But just to comment, the three hundred thousand dollars plus inflation, so it's not just three hundred dollars every year, it's really escalating based on inflation.
Yeah, thank you, that's correct.
So we could spend, we could spend four hundred thousand dollars and, and do it for the next five years and that would pretty well use up our fund balance.
That would use the.
Above the nine and a half percent.
Right, you're about two point one million dollars above the nine and a half percent right now. So your math is right, yeah, if you take five, four hundred thousand dollars a year, that's without inflation, for five years, you would, you would use that all up. You'd still maintain theoretically, depending on what the state does and what the mandates do to the regular fund balance. Um, after that five-year period of time, you've got to find out another revenue source or you're gonna have to cut all those programs. That's correct.
Or, or you're gonna draw that nine and a, below nine and a half percent.
Yeah.
Right, and just like we were discussing the circumstances of student entering the district that could require expenditures or looking at our enrollment next year, the numbers, how they might be impacted by the cuts. I think that would be dangerous in my mind, I mean, this is my opinion tonight, that we would decrease that fund balance.
On the other hand, I'm sorry, go ahead. On the other hand, we may lose some students if we don't bring some programs back too.
Right, so, uh, you know, these are all important items, uh, my, and, and I'm happy to keep discussing them if, if you would like. My, my goal tonight was not to decide those items, cause we need some numbers in front of us, I think, to make those decisions. Um, but, uh, to give you a sense of, of, uh, what we will be discussing in the next, uh, the next few meetings of this board. And to put that in context would be action that we're being asked to do this evening.
Using a fund balance creates a false positive for people in their educational system. As it gets to a point where you probably can't do it anymore and you get to the inevitable of that program does not continue. So it's not a true positive expenditure for those programs.
Well, it's positive, the people who, the parents whose kids are gonna not be able to.
I understand that, but you know, in four years, it'll be gone again.
Well, the inevitability of having to, uh, increase revenue is, it goes with it.
Well, that's, that's the point. I mean, you, there's two pieces, you have, you can't forget the second piece. The first piece is you can go ahead and spend that fund balance, but you need a long-term solution. If you don't have the long-term solution, then you're gonna be in trouble with your finances.
So just to reiterate, so on Monday at the work session, we would, there's the information provided, which is an open meeting, obviously in public, intuitism paid in when we go over those numbers. And by April thirtieth, or our next board meeting, you'd like to see.
I'd like, yeah, and then if you, if we need to put more board meetings between, you know, the work session and the regular board meeting, I'm more than happy to do that. Uh, we can pile as many on as you need to make some of those decisions, so just be thinking of that too.
Alright.
To, to make sure that I'm processing this, um, given that the, we do have a bigger fund balance than we anticipated a year ago, um, it would be possible to spend some portion of that to, um, address some of the program cuts that we have initiated or that have, that are already on, on the, on the docket. But that the, the fund balance is not a funding mechanism to maintain those or to sustain those. We might be able to do it for a year, but we have no guarantees that, uh, we have a sustainable funding system in place to support all those programs over the long term.
Exactly.
We may, we may have, be able to come up with a very short-term, uh, way to, uh, address some of these issues, but it is not a, a long. way to address some of these issues, but it is not a, a long-term answer to the district needs for programming resources.
Yeah, it's, it, I, I think it's easier for me if you break apart, let's just say we take that $2 million out and we put it into a CD, so it's completely separate. You can decide how, how long-term that is. Maybe your long-term is you take $100,000 out of that for ten years. Again, not accounting for inflation, is that long-term or not long-term? So you can keep that program, whatever that program is, for ten years. But again, as soon as that ten years expires, that program's either cut, or you've gotta find another revenue source. So those are the ideas, but you're right in the concept, that's correct.
Making sure I'm looking at it in, in a reasonable way.
The best would be to use that fund balance, that extra, that $2 million or whatever, or a partial portion of it, to bring back a program for a year and then try to pass a levy again.
Well, that's why you guys get to make those decisions, that's, uh, in my opinion, I think that could be very positive.
Well, I think there's a lot of parents out there that would like to save a few things and try for another levy.
I think there's a lot of staff that would like to do the same thing.
All right, so we will have that on the docket for our next meeting. Unless there's anything further about the timeline and how we're gonna look at these things. We'll move on to item D then, consider approval of resolution placing probationary staff on terminated sta- status. So these are non-tenured staff. Who have been with this district, that would typically mean for less than three years.
Yep, that's correct.
And they can be placed on termination for, for any reason. I'll entertain a motion to approve in a second, and then we can discuss their motion to approve.
Regretfully, I'll move to re- approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve? Any further discussion on this item?
Just a clarification, are we acting on the resolution that's in the packet?
Uh, y- I'm not sure what you mean, I would assume so, yes?
The re, yes, it's the resolution.
Okay, we're not, yeah, we're not acting on placing them on, we're actually taking the resolution is what my second was.
Yes.
Second to the resolution of placing, proposed placing them on.
Further comments, Mr. Olson?
These are non-tenured, right?
Correct, this list is, right, the next one is not, but yes.
Yeah, this, many of them here, twenty, thirty. Now, these are not related to any cuts that we, that was approved last September. Does that have nothing to do with that?
Oh, absolutely, I think it does.
It does, it does.
They all do.
They, they all-
They all intertwine.
Okay, so it's intertwined, so basically, the young teachers.
The, well, we, we say the non-tenured staff right now. And the separation is that we terminate the non-tenured staff, and then if something comes up, then they're free to reapply, but we don't have to hire them back. The unrequested leave of absence, staff that are on ULA are staff that we do put on ULA, and if a position opens, then they are automatically hired back. So the non-tenured staff, basically, I think you have a little bit more administrative control on those layoffs, because you're non-tenured. But they're all grouped as one large cut. Some of these may come back as a result of being non-renewed, based on the recommendation of the principals or the coordinators to non-renew them. But we purposely don't identify those at the, at this stage.
So some of these names here could result of, uh, they, careful, didn't make the grade?
Yeah, I think that's, it, the principals felt that it wasn't the right, they wanted to go a new direction or it wasn't the right fit for them.
So they're all mixed in here?
Yep. But again, the, the reason why they're done that way is because they're non-tenured staff. So we wanna make sure we do a terminating piece, so that we have, as a district, we can still go out and if they're the best candidate, we hire them back if we need to, if not, we can hire somebody else. On the ULAs, we don't have that option.
Obviously, we're trying to give them an opportunity to either explore other employment-
That's correct, early enough so they can go up and get a job.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call.
Alphabetically. Howard Bodie, I'll vote aye. Tom Casper?
Reluctantly voting aye.
Kev Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
And Jason Ingraham?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, the vote is six in favor and one against.
Thank you very much, Mister Clerk. Next on an item on the agenda, not any easier, this is for tenured staff, consider approval of resolution proposing to place non-probationary staff on ULA, which is unrequested leave of absence. These are tenured staff, and therefore have first rights of return. If we hire positions back, they have the right to fill those positions before we hire outside the district.
Looks like music takes a heavy hit. Let's bring in a motion, huh?
So on to entertaining a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve? Further discussion on this item?
Mister Chair, I think it's been discussed here that bringing back some of this, using some of our fund balance, maybe could bring back some of these, like ban or journalism or whatever, so. This is tough.
Very tough.
This is tough, very, very, very tough. Recognizing the names, and I've seen it for many, you know, many years, so it's, um... Okay, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I have a question.
Yes, please, Miss Davis.
There's one person on this list who is already on a leave of absence or sabbatical, but he's still not high enough up there to-
That's correct.
Sorry, I hope you guys understood what I was saying.
I think so. Didn't Jerry said, "Talk louder"?
I wish I could.
All right, any further discussion on this item? I know I speak for the entire boardroom, I say that none of us take any joy in this item. Right, hearing no further, sorry, Mister Casper?
Well, just having had the privilege of working with a number of these people during my time as a district employee, this is a particularly unhappy duty. I recognize the, the legal requirements and the, and the situation that we are in, but a number of these people are outstanding educators, and I'm hoping that we can get them back somehow, but at this point, I see no other option.
Actually, I have one question. It's in regards to that person again. I don't know if Nicole would better. If for some odd reason we do something and some of these people are saved, would that person still be allowed to be on sabbatical and bring back one of those non-tenured people?
The continuation of the sabbatical, depending on, I'm not sure how many years it is, but if it is the, the extension, then that person would be allowed to stay on sabbatical pending board approval again. And then we would be able to do that, if that is correct.
Just have a question also on journalism, photography and guided studies. Refresh my memory, was that on the budget reductions?
That was, we had, remember with the middle school and the high school? We had FTEs, and depending on how the registration and everything else panned out, we were able to hit those FTEs and how that schedule all works. So they moved a little bit with the FTEs, both in the, not the FTEs, but the, the way the schedules work with the different positions within high school and middle school. So they varied a little bit, and these, after we filtered everything down, after the scheduling and after the seniority pieces, those were the ones that came out. And these are also based on recommendation by the departments themselves. So, for example, the English department was required to make, I can't remember the nu- number, FTEs. So we went to this, the English department, they came up with a recommendation within the English department, and that's where the FTEs came up.
Ethan, it's all, if bumping is, was this involved with bumping too, or?
Yep, some of this had to deal with seniority. Yeah, actually, I would say almost all of this had to deal with seniority. And then trying to figure out where everybody fell through. It took two days of eight, two eight-hour days to figure this out with, with the union staff, the administration and the cabinet, to figure out where all these bumps were. We still may make some errors and we'll have to go back it, but that's the reason why we're doing it ahead of time, so we can make those corrections. Yep. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, yeah, but you know, you can't, like a science teacher can't bump a FIAID teacher.
They can if they have the certification and they have more seniority. And that happened a few times in there too, not just that particular subject, but there might be dual certified, yes. In fact, there might be a third position out there that it could do a triple bump to, if there's a person that certified somewhere else that happens to be getting bumped, who has more seniority than a non, a probationary person, even though that's not where they're teaching right now, and this other person who started the bumping process would move here, this person would have to be let go, so this person would go. It's a pretty complicated process.
If like, say, a, a science teacher has got a science on the FIAID, then all of a sudden, they've been doing science for thirty years, then we bump, you know, eliminate science, whatever, could they, but they haven't taught it in-
They'd be able to bump into-
With no experience.
That's correct, as long as they have the certification.
And it's current.
And, and the license is current.
But they haven't taught it in thirty years. It does make a difference, right?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion on this item?
But I mean, I would argue that, you know, I would support a person that's worked in the school district for that length of time, and their employment here is valuable, I mean, even though they may not have been teaching FIAID currently, I would, you know, understand that they deserve consideration because of their commitment to our school district and the seniority they earned.
Well, I think we're doing tonight what we knew we'd have to do when the levy didn't pass last November. So we might as well get on with it.
Sounds like calling the question to him.
It does.
But officially, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, then I will, I will call a, I'll call a, for a roll call vote, please, Mister Clerk.
I'm gonna vote aye, Tom Casper?
Reluctantly, aye.
Kev Davis?
With a heavy heart, aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Robichaud?
Yes.
And Jason Ingraham?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, it is six in favor and one opposed.
Okay.
Thank you all for working through that with us tonight, not an easy thing to do, and nobody on this board takes any pleasure in that. Other items of information, we do not have a student representative with us tonight, so I look for items of information from the school members. Mr. Olson?
Yes, I was at the capo with Todd on Thursday, talked to Representative Pritz and Senator Jensen, and had a very good discussion. And of course, that everything can change, but preliminary figures, it could be, we could get the first year maybe $600,000 plus. Depends other funds coming in, but you please correct me if I'm-
Yep, no, I think it ranges from the governor's proposal at $50 a student, all the way to the House and-
Hundred and fifty-six per-
Yeah, a hundred and fifty-six per student.
Then it goes up the second year.
Hundred and sixty-some.
Yeah, but it's like $600,000 plus, and we're not even mentioning all day, everyday kindergarten and other, maybe more money for special ed and so.
Yeah, and as they move across the spectrum throughout the whole process, we'll, we'll figure out more and more what the proposal. Yep, pretty hard to predict right now.
Yeah, Senator Jensen did mention, they might know something to end of April.
That would be dependent upon the tax as well.
Yes.
Exactly, they, they, they don't know how to pay for it yet, but it's going to tax committee.
Yep, should be next week, when they get back from break.
And also that some of the unfunded mandates that might be coming our way.
Yeah.
One in particular is they might force us to hire a bullying director. You know, like sit in the-
In each school?
Oh, each school? Oh, I thought it was for the whole district, oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a, it's, in theory, the bullying policy that they're reviewing at the state is good, and we want to eliminate bullying just as badly as parents do. And the only difference is that this one's requiring some expenditures that we just can't afford, and I think it's really gonna be difficult, hard on districts if it gets passed, so. We're not opposed to the bullying policies, we're opposed to the mandate that we have to hire staff for this.
So I'm understanding that this would be an unfunded mandate?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Another unfunded mandate.
I thought it was just one for the district, but I didn't know for each school.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna give you an increase, but they're gonna say along with it. You have to go out and play your-
Yep, I'm not gonna speculate at this time, so if we can just let the process run through, we'll see what happens. But if you see that policy coming through, I'd be, I would suggest that you call your legislatures and tell them that it's not something that we can do. We're doing a good job with our middle school anyways, with some of the programs that we have.
Yeah, the, yeah. And did I, also, I invited both of them to a work session or meeting. They are welcome here. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, any other items of information?
I'll try to talk just a little longer. I was very happy, but I actually don't even know what to say right now. I chaperoned a band trip to Denver for spring break. It was an amazing trip, the kids were unbelievably good. There was ninety-three students and seven chaperones on two buses. And in tight quarters, they did very well. And we had a lot of fun seeing everything. We got spoiled with sixty-degree weather in Denver, other than one day when we went skiing, and it was like negative thirty-five on the mountain with the wind chill. So, but they did very, very well and had a lot of fun, so.
What grades was it?
Basically, the highest school. And there were mostly band and orchestra members, a few choir members, and then there was a few here or there friends of, to make sure we had enough people for the trip. But they did have a wonderful, wonderful time, so. Yeah, was interesting for an old lady to sit on a bus that long, but you know, hey. It, it was fun.
Any other items of information from the school board members? Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Richard, both for the activities you partake, partook of in this last month. Next then, other items of information from our superintendent?
I've been to a few meetings, and one of the meetings that I've been attending is a professional development meeting with Mankato State University, University of Minnesota, Mankato. And we're actually developing a, a possible principal academy. We like to take developing staff members who may be interested in going into administration and then coming up with some ideas of, of how we can give them some experience to see whether or not they're interested in a principal's position. That's one of the things that we are, we would love to develop is future leaders for our school districts, and this may be one good avenue through the resources that University of Minnesota, Mankato offers to help us do that. I was on FCTV with Cheryl Hall, our special education director, and we had a very good meeting with Bruce Crinkie and Troy, and I thought it went very well. We, I offered some testimony for a school-aged childcare program up at the Senate last week, and we talked about trying to figure out ways where we can make school-aged childcare in our schools anyways, that's where I was speaking of, more affordable for parents who are possibly on some county assistance or need some financial help. It would actually give them an additional dollar amount of financial relief- It would actually give them, uh, an additional dollar amount of financial relief for the programs that we offer here. And I think it's very valuable for our population, I'm, I'm hoping that it'll, it'll pass. The process is an accreditation process for our program. So, uh, Lisa Wetzel and, and Anne Marie would go through an accreditation process for our school-aged childcare program. If our program passes the accreditation process, then the parents who are taking their kids to our program would be offered that, that extra percentage in, uh, financial relief for, for paying for the childcare program. And that's for our program, other childcare programs within the community could also qualify for that piece. So it's a very good program for, for our parents, if we can get it to them. It still has little ways to go through the House and the Senate, but it is moving along right away, it's in the financial piece right now. So there, there is hope that it'll pass, and thank you to Lisa and Anne Marie for helping out with that piece. The, let's see, been visiting a few classrooms, uh, making some observations of tenured staff, and the principals are doing pretty well. We still have a little ways to go, but we're moving right along in that direction. The teacher evaluation does not have to be implemented until the following year with the different scores, so we still have one more year of trial before we can, uh, before we are required by the state to implement that. And part of that requirement is, of course, the thirty-five percent, I'm looking at Tom right now, the thirty-five percent testing and the, and the, um, data that has to go along with that to evaluate staff. So it's been a good experience getting into the classrooms, I've enjoyed that, uh, see some outstanding teachers doing some outstanding work with kids. Uh, it's remarkable to watch what they do with the resources that they have, it's terrific, and kudos to them. Uh, also, go ahead.
Todd, what schools have you been in?
Been in the high school to do an observation, I was at Lincoln last year, and then I was in, uh, Roosevelt this past year. I've got another one at Roosevelt, I've got a, a couple coming up in the future too.
What was the largest class you were in?
Well, for observation, the elementary class that I was in last year at Lincoln probably had twenty-five, twenty-six kids, that was a, uh, gosh, I'm gonna get this one wrong, what grade is, uh?
I don't wanna put you on the spot, I just was curious.
I can remember this is second or third grade classroom.
Cause I know some of those high school classes are up around thirty, thirty-five.
Yeah, the Eng- the English classrooms right now I've visited have, are up, right, one of the classes that Sarah Simon teaches is right around thirty-one kids in the classroom now. That's before the English cuts have occurred. Some of the middle school classrooms that I've been in have up to thirty kids in the classroom, that's a science, and those will increase dramatically next year. So, uh, yeah, they're, they're getting pretty big. They are big now, they're gonna be a lot larger next year because of the cuts. Yep.
Anything that surprised you?
You know, it's just, it always, it's a pleasant surprise when I go into the classroom, watching the techniques that the teachers use to reach all their kids. The one thing that continues to surprise me is when I go into the classroom, and certainly the parents do a great job with these kids too. But the kids, I would say nearly a hundred percent of those kids are on task. And, uh, from the re- the, the math class that I observed in the high school, every single one of those kids were on task with that. And, uh, it was very evident that the teacher cared about the kids, and that the kids were, were doing well. And I think our math scores are a result of, of that. The elementary school, same thing, you've got twenty-six, twenty-seven kids, and it is amazing to watch all those kids when they rotate around to see a hundred percent of those kids, or nearly a hundred percent of those kids on task every single minute of that hour. So I think that's the, the pleasant surprise that I see. Uh, as Mister Olson said, I, we went to the Capitol together, and the other thing is that's coming up, we, we're working on a mini-conference, and that is a conference, I'm working with some folks from Sanial, Saint Olaf. I think, I, maybe I haven't sent you that information, did I send that to you? But it should be a good conference, the, the students are taking that on from Saint Olaf mainly. It's kind of a continuation, do you remember the report that they came out with a couple of years ago? With some of the racial and the diversity issues within Fairbowl? It's sort of a continuation with that, we're trying to involve more folks. In fact, we're gonna have a gentleman by the name of Sam Oak, who runs the, um, Newcomers Center in Rochester, he's gonna be our guest speaker. And he's gonna talk about some of the things that Rochester's done, and, and some of the things that we could possibly do in our school system to help out some of the newcomers in our, our situ- in our system. So it should be a good conference, and you're all invited. I'll get you more data as I get the information for you.
The date again on what?
April eleventh, from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty, so we'd love to have you. And don't have to participate, you can just, uh, sit and listen and visit, so it should be a good conference, it's our first one, so hopefully this will be the, the first of, of many in the future. And that's all I have.
Excellent, alright, well, thank you very much, Todd. Uh, lastly, item twelve, dates to remember. Uh, April first, um, twenty thirteen, five-thirty P M, work session, uh, in the district office, uh, that is not a joke. April eighth, twenty thirteen, uh, at seven-thirty A M, uh, the finance meeting in the district office. Uh, on April ninth, at four-thirty P M, the policy meeting at the district office. Um, April sixteenth, at four P M, uh, the community ed advisory council in the district office. Um, April twenty-second, at four-forty-five, the curriculum meeting at the district, district office. Um, finally, uh, on April twenty-second, uh, at six-thirty, right back here in the city council, city, city hall, council chambers, will be our next regular board meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.